Good evening. This is the zoning board of appeals for the town of Newcastle. It's September 26, 2018 meeting. As you can, just one note, as you can see this evening, there are only three members of the board here, so for each application that we hear, you will be, or it will be necessary for you to receive three affirmative votes to have your application approved. So if anyone feels that that is a circumstance that they don't want to endure, they can have their application postponed until next month, when I assume we will, we will have our full board present. Okay? Mr. Secretary?
First case is Petrov.
Good evening. Ken Anderson with Grand Outdoors Architects. I represent the Petrovs. The Petrovs are seeking a variance for FAR. They currently have a house that's existing at $11,330, and we seek to add a pool house to an existing pool area, which is 920 square feet. They previously have had a few variances granted, one of which was for the $11,330 to accommodate finishing existing third floor attic space. But prior to that, they, the house itself is about over 10,000 square feet. The house is in a one acre zone. As you know, in a one acre zone, the FAR maxes out at 7320 square feet. However, I believe in the one acre zone, it stops, it stops at the acre, 1.7 acres. Their lot is 10.2 acres, so it's a substantial lot, just to give you an idea of its location. This is Devoe. This is 35 Devoe. You come in here, and it's pretty much surrounded by the backyards of a lot of houses. The inside perimeter of this property is very heavily screened. If you want to flip through here, this is the pool area we're talking about. All of the surrounding areas have pretty densely vegetated perimeters. This is the front of the yard, which not really near. This is the tennis court, which is over in here in this area. This is more of the front. This is the side looking across here. This is where the pool house will go. This represents the back, closest neighbor to the pool, which is hundreds of feet away, but it's all, you can't even see them. The only house that does see this is, is this neighbor here, which it's, it's his father. We did his house a year ago, and he purposely opened up the landscape a little bit so he can be closer and see his grandchildren. We also have already been to the ARB, and they've approved the aesthetics of what the house is.
Let's go back a little bit to your previous applications. Has any of that work been done, or has any been done, or any or all, or none? Sometimes we get these, we get these applications, and we approve things, and they don't get done.
Understood. I was not the architect for any of the previous variances that were granted. The one that was granted for the attic was done.
It was done.
That was, and that has a COO. And the one that was granted for the previous pool house was actually granted, but never done.
I remember that.
And that was for enclosing the entire pool structure.
Correct.
We're only doing a pool house.
Okay. The other question I had was, we determined initially that it's a 10.2 acre lot.
Yes.
In a one acre zones, but it is not subdivisible.
Correct.
From what I understand. Is that still the case?
I believe so.
And it will never be subdivided?
I believe so.
Okay.
Actually, Tony, the condition in the previous approval was that the applicant, there actually, it was done both times, and it was worded slightly differently both times. First, the first one, which was 2015, which, which granted then the approval for enclosing the pool area.
The pool, I remember that.
And a pool house. And you're saying they didn't, they didn't do either of those.
Correct.
But that one, so I don't think they can ever go back and do it at this point, because the time period has elapsed.
Correct. That's why we're coming.
No, that, that wasn't what I was, I just wanted to verify the fact that...
Yeah, no, no. And the, and the condition, one of the conditions was that the applicant or any future owner of this property will be required to return to this board for any required variances for the floor area ratio, if they were to reduce the size of the property by subdividing it. That's the way that was worked.
That's the one I was, the one...
The second time, when we allowed them to do the attic and increase the FAR, the condition was, this applicant or any future owner of this property will be required to return to this board for additional variances from the floor area ratio requirements in the event they want to subdivide the property in the future. So I think what it should say, it should say two things, in the event they want to subdivide or reduce the size of the property in the future.
I think we had a lot of concern about that originally.
Yeah, like, like.
Okay.
And then this picture, is that something that, is that the proposal?
Correct. Yes.
And enclosure is then over the pool?
That's a retractable enclosure. It's kind of a glorified pool cover. It, it's not motorized or electric. It's, it just pushes open and closed.
Is that included in the FAR?
No, it's, that's not included in the FAR. That's like a pool cover.
It's the pool cover. Wouldn't have to include that in the FAR, wouldn't it?
How did you arrive at the size of the pool house? And, yes, had you arrived at that size, what did you take into account? How did you come to that conclusion versus something that might be smaller, knowing that a variance is required?
Right. Well, we went smaller than obviously what the previous application was, a lot smaller, almost half, more than half. And then, you know, we have a minimum requirement of what they were looking for, which was a changing room, two bathrooms, and an open area, which is a porch area, a shaded area. Because there's, there's not a lot of large trees in this particular area, but there's a lot of large trees on the, on the property.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak this application? I move that we close the public hearing.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that the application of Alexey Petrov for the construction of a pool house requiring a variance, a FAR variance of 4,930 feet. And I'll clarify that by saying the allowed, the allowed FAR in that area is 7,320 feet, and the proposed FAR will be 12,250 feet.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
If it was previously granted for that 11,330, do we have to ask for the 4,000, or is it just the 920? That's a legal question. I don't know the answer.
I'm not a lawyer. That's why we have a legal table.
Yeah.
Technically, so you received, you received a variance, so that lets you have a certain level. You actually only need the variance to the next.
So it's 920.
Which would be how many?
925.
So you only need the variance, you don't have to go back to square one?
You don't have to go back to square one, because the variance runs with the land, so that's already in the record. So he only needs a variance enough to cover the 920.
Even if they never built it?
No, no, they, they did, the, the one for the 11,000, sorry. It's confusing, because they, they didn't happen sequentially.
Okay.
The 11,330 happened in 2016 for the attic.
Okay, that was, on that, now I get it.
And the third floor. But that encompassed the existing large house.
Right.
So, so that would be a smaller margin.
So now we're looking for 920.
920.
How much?
920.
920 square feet.
But you're right, if it was never built, that means the variance expired, and you'd have to start from square one.
Yeah, because our usual, yeah, our usual caveat is that you have, you know, six months to start and a year to finish. And if you don't do that, you're done.
Exactly. And if you don't do that, then the variance vanishes.
Correct.
All right.
Sorry.
I'm okay with the 920. That's not a problem. And I move that we approve this for the following reasons. This is, you know, one acre zone, it's an unusually large piece of property, being 10.2 acres. The, the house sits well off the road, not visible from the road or from almost any of the neighbors. Only maybe one or two can see what's going on, and there's been nobody here that has come to speak against it. The granting of the variance will not create any undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. There's really no other way to achieve this desired end, other than to grant the variance. In some cases, this could be considered a substantial variance. In this particular case, I'm going to say it's not substantial because of the situation of the property size, and the location of the construction, the buildings on the property. There will be no adverse effect to the physical environment, and these are not self-created hardships in that the zoning laws have changed, that the Petrovs purchased the property, and they must comply with them, not, not because of their own fault. And if you will have six months to start, one year to finish, we should grant, I want to put a caveat in there that...
Make that a condition.
The condition that, how are you going to word this now?
I'll read it to you again.
Read it again, because I want to get it right.
The applicant or any future owner of the property will be required to return to this board for additional variances from the floor area ratio requirements, in the event they want to subdivide or reduce the size of the property in the future.
Well said. I'll agree to that.
I second all those in favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Post. Thank you. Have your variance.
Thanks very much.
Right on.
Good evening. Amit Radha, co-owner of the property, representing master. So we are here for variance for addition. So basically, the 6410A front yard setback, it's 40 meters is required, and we are at 36 plus for the proposed addition. Basically, the house was grandfathered into this. It was probably built before the rule came in. We already have an existing deck over there, so basically what we are doing is converting that into a bedroom, just with the inclusion size of the family. So that's why, so if I can approach, I can, so... So basically, this, this is the proposed addition?
I'm sorry. If you could just bring the microphone with you, or speak into the microphone, either one is fine, just so we capture it.
You can slide that out and carry it if you like. Just pull it toward you. That's it.
Good. Yeah. So the shaded area over here is a new addition. Currently, we do have a deck over there. So basically, the proposal is to convert that into a bedroom. And because, as I said, when the house was built, it was a different set of tools, so we are asked to come and get a variance.
So is that to say that the bedroom conversion...
Mm-hmm.
...does not extend out beyond where the...
The current deck is.
Current deck or porch, porch is today.
Yeah.
I see. Okay.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
I'm a little confused about this application, because you're asking for a four foot variance. But if you need 40 feet, and the, do we have to go to the, that was my question. Do we count the overhang? Sometimes we do, sometimes we don't.
The overhang, it should have been a 32 foot variance. An eight foot, he needs eight feet to make this work. Needs 40 feet, he's wired up 40 feet.
Right.
If you look at the survey now, it shows 30 feet to the overhang.
That was my question, right.
The overhangs are projections from the, from the side of the house, and they're not included in the measurement. You're going to the foundation.
So we don't have to consider the overhang?
We don't have to include that in the dimension.
This has always been a question, because sometimes it's been in and sometimes it's been out.
We have maximum projections that are allowed.
Okay.
But this is within that dimension.
So that, that we don't have to worry about that?
Correct. Surveys are to the foundation, not to the appendages.
So then, what are we ending up with for the actual variance?
Eight feet.
Eight feet.
Eight feet. Because even on the revised application, it still says four feet. That we got tonight.
He's got it in two, two places now. I think they intended to correct it down below in the red.
Correct.
Right, okay.
They didn't, they didn't change it.
But you didn't change it up here. So this is, this is wrong. It's eight feet. No problem. Okay. That's all the questions I had.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak this application? The record show there isn't. Any other questions? Any other questions?
No.
I move that we close the public hearing.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion. I move that the Pradhan application for an eight foot front yard variance for the construction of a bedroom, where today a deck exists, be approved for the following reasons. This will not create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. The benefit cannot be sought by other means. The variance is not substantial. There will be no adverse impact on the physical environment. And though self-created, this will allow the homeowner to create more sleeping space for his family. You'll have six months to start and one year to complete. And we will, there are no surveys that are required?
There will be, yes.
Yes.
We're going to want a foundation survey.
You're creating a new foundation?
We'll have to put a new foundation.
You will, okay. We'll need a foundation survey prior to framing.
Okay.
Okay?
And upon completion. You would need one on completion also, too?
We will not. The foundation survey will give all dimensions. That will not change afterwards.
These reasons, I think we should approve the application.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Have your variance.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I like that.
John Warfield, Margaret Mullin.
Good evening. Hi. And we're here for a variance, because when the house was designed, it was at a certain elevation, and because of the backyard walkout, it had to be raised about five feet. When you raise it five feet, the stairs now go out.
Or...
Two, two and a half feet. Something like that. So that's what we're looking for, is the stairs.
So that's the amount of the variance, two and a half feet?
There's also an additional staircase he'd like to build.
Yeah. We did not, because we knew that would be outside the variance, outside of the permitted area. We didn't know on the other end.
Mr. Warfield's asking you for two variances for the existing staircases, and one variance for the new staircase.
Okay. So eight feet for the existing stairs, 18, 18 feet for the new stairs.
No, it's not that much.
18 feet for the rear yard, 15 feet for the rear yard. I'm sorry. So existing, you need eight foot front yard, 15 foot rear yard?
Yeah, we do have variances already, but we're just extended beyond what those are. We have nine point variances.
But you came to us before the house was built?
Yes.
And you have a little, variances for, to get it on that piece of property. I remember that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Corner of the garage, and then the steps, and then the front porch, and then the, yes.
So what you're talking about is unforeseen circumstances as the construction progressed?
Yes, they made an adjustment on site, and I guess nobody thought about the physics.
Okay.
Geometry's never been my best subject, so. And high school was a long time ago, too, so. And as long as we're here, we're going to ask about that, that third staircase, which we, as I said, we did not build. It's got a silly little balcony there now.
So that staircase is not yet constructed. It says proposed on the plan.
I have photos if you'd like to see them, which would be helpful.
The patio is, that's shown, shown on your site plan, is that not being done?
The patio was adjusted. They made it square instead of round.
Those were all permitted in the first variance. You don't have a problem with that.
It says new patio and walk.
Yeah, so I, I don't have a particularly good picture of the patio.
Is that covered by the previous variance?
Yes.
So the staircase that's coming down came out a few extra feet because of, oh, I'm sorry.
Could you just, I'm sorry. And could you start by telling us your name?
Sorry, I'm Margaret Mullin. I'm the other homeowner. So the, the, in the photograph, the staircase that you see came out a couple of additional feet, because it went up a couple of additional feet.
Right.
Where you see that balcony?
Yes.
We did not put that in, because again, with the adjustment, it wasn't going to fit. Again, they didn't, the builder did not realize that it was going to need a variance. I would have been here six months ago. It wasn't until after they did the as-built that somebody realized that they were beyond in, in there, as well as the edge of this in front of the man door by the garage.
So we shouldn't be granting a variance for the patio?
I can't, for the...
The patio was included in the original variance.
Okay.
Okay? It was, it was round. They, instead of making it round, they...
And in fact, we, we made it square with less...
To make it smaller.
When did you make it round or square? Before the application was approved or after?
The, the, it was approved as a round, as a round patio.
And was it built...
We made it small, we made it smaller and made it square rather than, rather than round. So we made it smaller, we didn't use the entire variance.
You didn't use the full amount of the variance, but...
And when you're referring to the patio, you're not referring to this upper deck?
No.
And the upper deck was built according to...
The upper deck was built according to the plan. It was because the entire house was raised up that we ended up with more stairs.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak this application? The record show there isn't. I move that we close the public hearing.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Would you like to make a motion?
I move that we approve the application of John and Margaret Mullin, John Warfield and Margaret Mullin, 8 Mohegan Drive, for a front yard variance for existing stairs and two rear yard variances, one for the existing stairs and one for the proposed stairs. The amount of the variance for the front yard is eight foot. The amount for the variance for the existing stairs in the rear yard is 15 feet. And the amount for the variance for the new stairs in the rear yard will be 18 feet. For the, for the following reasons. The applicant has shown that variances requested are necessary to, for them to enjoy the existing structures on the house. The granting of the variance will not create an undesirable change or character of the neighborhood. No neighbors have appealed any opposition. There is no other feasible, feasible method is available to the applicant, which is likely to achieve the benefit being sought. The requested variances are not substantial, considering the nature of the improvement, which are the stairs, and their impact to the property. The proposed variance will not have a, an adverse effect on the physical environmental conditions of the property. While possibly self-created, this article is not one that would impair the applicant's application otherwise. For those reasons, I move that we approve the application. You have six, six months to start and a year to complete. You need a survey, something.
I will need a survey, yes.
Survey on completion. And that's it.
I second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Thank you. Have your variance.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Should I take this out?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
My ribbon?
Hi, this is Heather Boynton. Mary Scott, the architect. The Boynton home is on Glen Terrace off Hardscrabble, but because it actually borders on Hardscrabble, it has two fronts, Glen Terrace, a very long one on Hardscrabble. So anything done basically on the back of the house requires a front yard variance. There's an existing family room now, which you can see in this aerial view, and a terrace. Our proposal is to increase the size of the family room over what is now a terrace, and then to build a deck on the side. And one of the reasons for that is they have this lovely stream running through the property. And really, this is the only area that is usable, because this is a steep hill. This is a steep hill. And so opening this up for the expanded family room and then the deck will certainly add to the enjoyment of the property. We need three variances. One is a reduction of, from 60 feet to 39 feet for the actual family room, from 60 feet to 40 feet for the deck, and from 60 feet to 46 feet for the stair.
Family room is the 60 foot one. It's that, it's really the rear yard, but it's the front yard with gliss of its Hardscrabble.
Right. And there is, I mean, as you can see now, the, the existing family room is here. We're just making it larger. So we're not, we're not changing the non-conformity, but it is a non-conformity. We also do require wetlands permit, but I've been before them, and we're going to get a wetlands permit for building closer to the stream than 100 feet.
So looking at the contours, you're below Hardscrabble Road.
Correct.
Way below.
Yeah, we're like in a bowl.
Yeah, I'm looking at that. So you're not going to be visible from the road. Your nearest neighbor is where?
Over here.
Yeah, so that's...
And they're up.
Yeah. And if I know that area, it is pretty well screened with vegetation.
Yeah, they're up a steep, right. And well, all along the creek and along, yeah.
So screening, so screening wise, you're in good shape.
Actually, you can see a little bit of, that's the driveway.
Yeah, okay. I see it. Very good.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak this application? The record show there isn't. I move that we close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Hold on, is it fair to say aye?
Aye.
I'll make a motion. I move that the Boyrung application for three front yard variances for the construction of a family room and deck, in the amounts of twenty-one feet for the addition, twenty feet for the deck, and fourteen feet for the deck stair, be approved for the following The property is such that the construction will be contained, not largely visible to neighboring properties. There will be no undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. The benefit cannot be sought through other means. The variances perhaps are substantial, but, again, given the layout of the property and the elevation changes are reasonable. The variance will not have an adverse impact on the physical environment, and though self-created, will allow the homeowner to enjoy the improvements. You'll have six months to start, one year to complete, and will need a foundation survey prior to framing.
I'll second.
Hold on, is it fair to say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, have your variance.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Did I say it right?
That applicant is not here? Okay.
We'll move on. Caravell?
Hi.
Chris Levine, your architect for Elise, Caravell. We're proposing a relatively modest addition to the east of the existing house, and asking for a front yard setback variance, which is now forty feet. However, the original house was built to thirty-foot setback. And they were also approved for an addition in 1978 at a thirty-foot setback and subsequently was built. And we're also asking for a small portago extension into the front yard setback. The wording in the agenda was inaccurate in that the existing steps are there. So those are there, we're just proposing to build on top of it. We did try the addition to the north, and it wasn't practical for structural reasons. There's a slope, so it was... It would've been high out of the ground and structure-wise and planned layout, and it was difficult, as well as hurting the windows on that side. So we felt this was the most practical. Elise has a very tasteful style, the natural wood shingles, which will be continued and so forth, and we made an effort to really tie this, the addition, the aesthetic in. As you can see, and I think you have the photos also, on the streetscape, that the neighbors have a similar setback. So the character of the neighborhood is the same, and it even appears maybe some are a bit closer, and they also have projecting features, portagos, and similar items.
What is the...
I'm not sure if you have that.
What's the purpose of the addition?
To have a new... Elise's bedroom is here, and this is a new master bathroom, and below is a study. She actually proposed to do the addition only upstairs, but recommended against having a cold floor underneath, and we decided then to do the whole envelope for heated space.
Is there an existing master bathroom today that's being replaced?
There is not. So functionally, there was a need.
I see. Okay. And so, are there two variances you're asking for, or just one?
In the sense that the portago, yes. There's an existing small projection now, we just wanted to get a little more front door cover.
So what is the extent of the intrusion?
I have that on the site plan, I believe. Of course, with the thirty-foot setback, the entire house is nonconforming, so...
Right, I understand.
The portago projection, it's hard to read here, I believe it's three feet for the columns and four feet for the... It's only the floor. Three feet two to the face of the column and three feet eight to the roof.
So you need a four-foot variance for the portago?
Well, three feet eight.
Right.
Yeah. If the roofline counts versus the column.
Okay. And then, you need rounded up nine feet for the addition?
Yes.
How do we get that?
I didn't scale.
Twenty-nine feet to the house. Is it twenty-nine feet to the house?
Well, it is at that, but because of the arc of Orchard Ridge Road, it would be similar. There's actually a six-inch step back to the sod there. So it would be similar to twenty-nine and change, or let's call it thirty feet to the face of that addition, although it recedes from the radius, so nine feet would be close, nine to ten feet.
Make sure you care on the side of the little...
I want to give you eleven feet, because I don't want you to have to come back because of a little curve like that.
Appreciate it. I mean, I can scale it, I should've shown it here.
I think you said that the existing structure is a legal nonconforming.
Yes, I did.
Okay. Was they changed the code after it was built?
It appears, I'm not sure when the code was changed, but obviously, the house was built at the thirty-foot, and the addition was...
Legal nonconforming.
That's correct. So the addition is gonna carry the line of the existing house without... There's no jog that's gonna bring it closer or...
Yes, sir, no, it's an extrusion of the existing.
It's just gonna keep on going, okay.
Yeah, this is the six-inch drop back here, and then it keeps going.
And then you're gonna continue that.
If the addition were included in the original construction, you wouldn't be here.
Correct.
Probably not.
That's right.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to this application? Yes, please come forward. Could you please state your name for the record?
My name is Celia Costigan, and I live right across the street from... I don't know how to say that last name, say that again.
Caravell.
From Elise.
Caravell, yeah.
Okay. So first, I want to say that I think this is beautiful. I'm gonna start out by saying that. I think, you know, I have no question regarding, I think it's just beautifully done, and it fits the street we live on, and it certainly fits with your home. And you did, you answered my question about the portago, so I don't have that. I had concern, but you took care of that, so I don't have any more.
The reality is, if...
I'm sorry, could you just... I'm sorry, did you need to respond to something? If you do, I need you to come up, speak into the microphone.
Okay, sure. What I wanted to say is that the portago is not the most important thing. What's really important to me is to have this bathroom, but if you felt in any way that the portago would be some kind of deterrent to the neighborhood, then it's okay.
Okay, I don't think that's where we are.
No, not at all, no. No, I just had a question related to the size, but you said it was... The stairs are gonna stay the same.
I'm sorry, ma'am, if you could speak to us.
I'm sorry.
Okay, no, that's okay. We want to understand what it is that you...
Okay, so my concern was the size of the portago.
Okay.
Okay, and the stairs, and whether it would be coming out closer...
Nope.
Would be coming out closer to the street.
Okay.
Because the... Where the stairs start at the house now, it is kind of close to the street.
Okay.
And my concern was it would be even closer to the street. But that was my last thing, that was a concern. But in the process of...
I'm sorry, could I just, before you go on?
Yeah.
Keep your thought. So where do you live in relation to the applicant?
This is her house, and that's my house.
Okay.
Right across the street.
And so, do you feel, given what her architect has designed, that that is different than other homes on the street?
If anything, it's better.
It's better?
The portago included.
Don't tell me. It's very nice.
Okay.
That's what I started out by saying, that is not my question at all.
Okay.
You know, I thought if it's gonna turn out like that, it's... It just is... I think it's beautifully done, and if it looks like that, she has room on the side that she can do that, so it's fine.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just want to be clear. Do you object to what she is proposing in terms of the portago?
No.
Okay.
I do not, because it was clarified by the architect.
Very good. Then if you could just move on to your next point.
Okay, so my... In the process of looking into the proposal, I asked at the town hall, I asked if they knew that there was Airbnb as part of the structure, and the owner went out of Airbnb. And so, it was determined that that was not something that anybody knew about. I'm not saying in any way that it was hidden, because she has a very lovely website, so I don't think she was trying to hide anything. But that then, I had another question, I was wondering what about... I don't know anything about Airbnbs, and how many can you have, and what in one house? And so, I was told anyway by the town that... Is that correct? Are there no real regulations at this time? But they're not allowed, but there are no regulations?
Well, there is a town code, okay?
Okay.
That exists. I don't know... I'm sorry, I don't know what else you're gonna say, so please finish your thought.
Okay, so I wanted really some clarification about that. You know, is it allowed, or it's not allowed? And if it's not allowed, how do we go about getting it allowed? And is it... I don't know, I don't understand. Let's assume it's allowed. I don't understand, is a person allowed to have one room in a house? Just one room? Or can they have more than one room? That's important, because if it's one room, it's one thing. If it's gonna be... It's an existing room, but now we found out that it's actually maybe not licensed to whatever it's supposed to be. So I'm wondering if it's more... If more than one room would be allowed, you know? I believe there is room in the house for another bedroom. If more than one would be allowed, that would... That may very well impact on how the traffic of the area.
Okay.
So, but I guess my question is, nobody can seem to answer that question. What...
We've got great answers for you.
Oh! What I can?
But, so what I first want to do is separate what are two different issues, okay? One relates to an application that's been made for improvements to a house, okay?
Right.
And that's something that the zoning board evaluates and votes on, as you... Because you've been here, you've heard, we have been doing that. So that's our jurisdiction, and that's what we are going to be concerned with here tonight. At the same time, I understand what you're asking, and we have counsel and our building inspector here, and our building inspector is responsible for enforcement, and so, he's responsible for enforcing the town code, and he would be responsible for issues as it relates to this. But I'm gonna allow our counsel to give you a better answer than I've just given you.
Okay, so let me just say that I have no objection to the addition. I think it looks beautiful.
Okay.
She's... We don't know each other very well, you know, it's just a hello kind of thing, you drive by.
Sure.
But she seems like a very lovely neighbor.
Is it a big wave or a little wave that you typically use?
(laughing)
Okay, okay.
It's a good wave.
Okay, good.
It's a good wave, but I was concerned about, since it came up, and wait a minute now, is this allowed, or it's not allowed? If it is allowed, I'm concerned about that part of it.
Okay, why don't we do this? Why don't you sit next to your husband, and our counsel will explain this to you, okay?
Okay.
Okay?
Great, thank you. So the town does not have specific Airbnb regulations. This is a new thing municipalities are trying to address. Newcastle's code does include a provision, I'm going to read it directly from the Schedule of Regulations, permitted as an accessory use is the renting of not more than one bedroom and an owner occupied one family principal dwelling building to not more than one non-transient room or border, provided that such room shall be rented to the same occupant for a period of not less than one month. Shall not contain at least... Shall contain at least one hundred square feet of floor area exclusive of closet space, and shall not have separate kitchen facilities other than a refrigerator. And further, provided that the availability of rented quarters in such dwelling shall not be advertised on the premises, and the entry of such dwelling and its design shall be such that its exterior appearance will remain that of a one-family dwelling. So a daily Airbnb rental, where you're renting a room in your single-family home to a different individual every day, is not permitted by the town code. That does not come into play here for the purposes of reviewing the five factors for the variance, because her extension is not for Airbnb purposes, it's so that she can have a master bathroom. When the building inspector, you know, reviews the application and finds out that there's an existing violation, he can then pursue, you know, issue a notice of violation and go that route. He can also revoke or suspend building permits if there's a violation, so if the property's being used in such a way that's not permitted by the town code, the building department will take, you know, there's various steps that they can take to address it. If this is a concern, and people are very interested in Airbnb regulation, this is something that they can come to the town board about. But again, it is, it's new, and municipalities across Westchester, across the country, are trying to figure out how to best handle these types of uses. So stay tuned.
Can you give us your definition of non-transient?
Um...
How do we look at that? What do we consider to be transient or non-transient?
Sure, so, off the cuff, off the cuff.
Sorry about that.
Non-transient, I... I don't know, do you have more, Tom, better experience of the...
Someone that doesn't move frequently from place to place.
Okay, so that...
Yeah, more of a permanent resident.
Okay, so that just reinforces the fact that somebody has to be there for a month.
Right, so this is like a month, a month-to-month lease type of situation.
Right, okay.
Right.
So, now, if in fact the applicant is doing an Airbnb, does that affect the way we view the addition to the house? I mean, this is kind of a gray line for me, that if the house is definitely a master bedroom and everything's, no problem, but if it's a master bedroom to be rented out as a nightly basis or weekend basis or something, how do we know that? Do we have to know that?
Well, you can start by asking the applicant what the purpose of her addition is, and she can explain more. You know, if she says that the purpose is for her personal use and enjoyment, that's something that, you know, the board should accept, and rely on the building department to pursue any other necessary enforcement methods if she is lying in some way, or... I don't know, lying's a little aggressive, but, you know, and Airbnb is also very easy to investigate, it's online. We can confirm whether or not she is indeed renting her home as an Airbnb, so it's not something she can really hide. It's public information, so we can all find it.
So as a matter of clarification, could I ask the applicant now to explain the use of the addition, and whether or not it will be incorporated as an Airbnb, or is that not permitted?
Nope, you can ask that.
Okay, so I'm asking that. Could you tell us how you intend to use this room, and whether or not it will be used as an Airbnb? Can you go up to the microphone for me?
Absolutely. So is this coming up?
I...
I would like to address it as well, but I did ask you the question.
Okay, so this is my master bedroom. When I bought the house, I always knew that I was intending on increasing the size, because the bedroom does not have its own bathroom. So I always knew that at some point, once I saved enough money, I would be up for that. The, you know, so I ended up being able to be in that situation. It is, the addition is going to be off of my master bedroom. So I'll be able to finally take a bath and all of these things that I'm not able to do right now.
Okay, thank you. I just want to get that on the record. Thank you so much. You want to ask?
I may say, I've been in the house, and Elise, being French, and she really has an incredible interior environment that is obviously her private bedroom. It's furnished like a museum. It's not meant for public use. And she, this is just obviously a functional desire that she has to be next to that private space with a new master bath.
Thank you. Is there anyone else we didn't hear from? Thank you. And did you get the information that you were looking for?
Absolutely. I didn't know, my original initial concern was before I saw the plans, I thought perhaps you were adding a bedroom. But then, when I saw the plans this morning, it said bathroom. And it's obvious that you were adding a bathroom for yourself. That was never in question.
Okay, thank you. I move that we close the public hearing.
Before we close?
Oh, go ahead, yep.
Minor error on your application. Where it asked for total lot area square feet, you wrote down the required minimum amount rather than the actual square footage. You wrote down 11,250, you're actually 26,615. I'll have our secretary correct that, if you'd like to look at it.
Thanks, yeah, and it's also duplicated on the site plan, so I believe it's.
Yeah, but she'll fix it on the app.
Thank you.
Okay. Now you can close.
I move that we close the public hearing.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Would you like to make a motion?
All right, I'll make a motion that the application of Elise Caraveo for an addition to her existing residence and for the covering of the front portico. The addition requires a 11, I'm going to give you 11-foot variance. It's 40-foot required, and you're going to propose 29. And I think it's better if we do it that way, because if you get in trouble in your final survey, you're going to have to come back to us. I don't want that to happen, okay? And for the covered portico, it's required to have 40 feet, and you're having 23, so that'll be a 17-foot variance, okay? You agree with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. For the following reasons. This is a legally existing, non-conforming structure. And any renovations or alterations to it will require a variance. The variance, granting the variance will not create an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood. There is no other benefit, no other methods that could be used to achieve the benefit requested. This is not a substantial variance, because the existing house line will be continued through the new addition. It will not come any closer to the front property line as existing at the present time. There will be no adverse effect to the physical environment of the neighborhood. This is not a self-created, well, in a way, it's a self-created hardship, because you didn't have to do the addition. But it's not self-created, because it's a legally existing, non-conforming, and any work will require a variance. If it's deemed to be self-created, the benefit to the homeowner will far outweigh any detriment to the town or the neighborhood. You're going to need a foundation survey, I would assume? So you'll need a foundation survey prior to framing?
I'm going to say, this neighbor strongly supports.
Oh, yes, oh, I didn't see that. We do have a letter from an adjacent neighbor who strongly supports the project and has met with the current homeowner, and has gone over it, and is very, very much in favor of it. And you'll have six months to start and one year to finish.
Aye, second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Thank you, have your variance.
Thanks.
Yes?
The previous applicant I was in transit here, and I actually missed. Will I, can I still be heard at some point this evening?
Yes, one of you?
It was 16 Hollow Oak Road. It was the one porch just prior to the.
Oh, Masuko, yes. Do you want to do that now? We'll do it now.
Will you?
Yep.
Hi, no problem.
Good evening, my name's Thomas Haynes from Haynes Architecture. This evening, I have just example photos of the subject property and the neighboring houses, in case you didn't get a chance to go by the property. So again, we're 16 Hollow Oak Road. So tonight, we are proposing under this application a covered porch at the front of an existing dwelling. Currently, the dwelling is conforming with a front yard setback of just over 40 feet, which is required. And we are requesting this evening a relief of 5 and 1/2 feet for a front yard variance. The reason that the owners are requesting such variance is because Mr. and Mrs. Masuko are elderly. Mr. Masuko is sort of failing, so to speak. And the covered porch is going to function for two ways. First, the covered porch would provide shelter during inclement weather, rain and snow, when they're coming in out of the house, because he's kind of getting a little bit immobile. And then, secondly, it'll allow them the opportunity to sit on the front porch to enjoy the neighborhood and on the front part of the property as well, which is something that they had always thought about. And at this time, we're in front of you requesting said relief of the front variance. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I have a question of our building inspector. Do we need to include the steps in this variance, or just the porch? Because if you include the steps, then you need a greater variance.
We need to include the steps.
I thought so. Yeah, usually what we do. You'll need an eight-foot variance instead.
Correct.
Good.
I know you took these pictures and are showing us neighboring homes. What in your estimation are you showing us when you show us this?
Just to show the character of the neighborhood. Primarily, I want to show you the front of their house to show that there's nothing covering, really, that they don't have any shelter and things. And again, just to keep in the neighbors. We usually do that when we present.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak this application? Let the record show there isn't. I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the application of Rosalie Masuko of 16 Hollow Oak Road for a eight-foot front yard variance for the purpose of installing a covered front porch to an existing residence. For the following reasons. The applicant has demonstrated that the proposed alteration will be minimal and is required for the full enjoyment of the home by the current owners. No neighbors have appeared or written in opposition. The granting of the variance will not create an undesirable character or change the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties. No other feasible method is available to the applicant, which is likely to achieve the benefit being sought. The requested variance is not substantial. And the proposed variance will not have any adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental condition of the property. The applicant's difficulty or hardship is not self-created. For those reasons, I move that we approve the application. You have six months to start, a year to complete, and a foundation serve. Foundation serve. Foundation serve.
I'll second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much, I really appreciate it, welcome.
Okay, DiMartino.
So we have two applications left here, and three people in the room.
We're together.
I'm just saying.
Good evening, good evening. My name is Jason Drake, I'm a general contractor. I'm working for the DiMartinos. Mr. DiMartino and Dr. DiMartino, apologies, I couldn't be here. It seems Ms. Dr. DiMartino has been called to jury duty, and they're kind of scrambling to figure out their schedule with their kids and everything else. So I was going to be here either way to help answer any questions for Mr. DiMartino. So right now, we have a permit to do a garage addition, which we're probably almost 70% complete with. What I'm here for is a setback variance for a generator at the rear yard. We have an existing detached garage that sits pretty much on the, the back corner of the garage sits on the setback line right now. We've looked at this, I've looked at this every which way, to try to get it in a different location. One of the problems we're running into is that the DiMartinos don't have a basement. The whole house sits on ledge. And there's no easy access to get out of the house to run this generator line anywhere that's convenient. So with the addition going on, we found a relatively easy and inexpensive way to utilize that addition and then run the gas line and the electrical supply line out behind the detached garage. And of course, because of the requirements, the building code requirements for the generator having to be 10 feet off the house, it pushes me that much further into that rear yard setback.
So there isn't the opportunity to put it, for instance, in front of the garage, as opposed to?
It's all parking area right now.
Parking, I see.
I wanted to try to put it on the side of the addition that's going up, but that doesn't, that barely, it doesn't meet the requirements, especially when it's having to be 10 feet off the house.
Certainly a lot going on in this.
It's weird, it's a huge lot.
Right.
It's, this all sits on ledge. And there's no easy way to do without incurring any huge costs or potentially lowering the value on the home by parking a generator up front, or?
What about this area over by the pool? Why is that not a candidate for instance?
That's one, that's, they're septic, so it's going to be difficult. And it just, because the addition's right here and the mechanic room's relatively close, I can come up and over with my lines in this addition and go right back here, between the pool, and then I have to excavate. There's great, oh, sorry.
Mike with you? No, just take it out and carry it with you.
There's grade changes back there. And it's much bigger expensive. Honestly, I'd kind of like to do it, because I get to make more money. But I also have a responsibility to my client.
Don't say that, we should strike that from the record.
I have a responsibility to my client to do the, to try to make a fiduciary decision. And also to try to send it back. I mean, these things are so quiet now, you never really hear them anymore. Although, I also tell a lot of my clients that the best thing to hear in the middle of a power outage is your generator running.
So what property is located on the other side of the border?
So we need to be concerned about, so what's, yeah, what's behind their property? Where is the next neighbor? And what screening exists on the property line that might?
Oh, great questions. One is, I don't know, I can't see the house. It is so far set back, I don't know if there's even a house back there. If it's built of a lot, if it's just vacant land. It's also, I have natural rock ledge, a steep slope, ton of, I wouldn't characterize it as forest, but heavily wooded. So it's a natural screen already.
So you're saying when you're standing where the generator will be located, and you're looking in that direction, you can't even, at this point today?
I can't even see over the crest of the hill.
So there's elevation?
Yes, sir.
And?
Yes, sir.
Any neighbors here?
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to this application? Let the record show there isn't.
Another question.
Yes, yep.
You're looking for a rear yard variance?
Yes, sir.
Also, you've got side yard checked also. Is that a mistake, or why do we have that checked?
The way the property kind of clips that garage, I guess I'm not sure if it's rear or side. I guess it's kind of both. To me, it's more, it's more side, it's more rear than it is side.
We're just looking to give you a variance for the generator.
Yes, sir.
We're not dealing with the garage.
Correct, because that is an existing garage.
Generator's in the rear yard.
Plenty far off the side, you don't have to worry about that.
The board is interested, I pulled up a satellite image on my cellphone. If you want to just take a quick look, you could see the amount of space. My arms are too short.
There's a bath area.
I know, it's a very, oh. Assuming the same view will exist in the wintertime, then it's not a problem.
Oh, yeah.
I don't see any structures.
Thanks.
I just thought that was very interesting.
Just don't tell me, come on.
So we're just dealing with a rear yard variance. Okay.
I move that we close the public hearing.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Would you like to make a motion?
I make this motion that the application of Charles and Verna DiMartino for a rear yard variance in order to install the propane generator variance amount to be 23 feet. 60 feet is required, and proposed existing is 37. I'm giving you a little fudge factor. Okay? 23-foot variance for the following reasons. The granting of the variance will not create an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood due to the construction of the existing building, and it's all on ledge rock, there is really no other way to achieve the benefit of installing this generator other than the location chose by the homeowner and builder. This is not a substantial variance in this particular instance. There will be no adverse effect to the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. Again, technically, this is a self-created hardship. There may be other areas on the property to install this generator. But in reality, this is the best location for aesthetics and for preservation of the property value. And installing it there, the benefit to the homeowner, it will far outweigh any perceived detriment to the town or the neighborhood. The large, it's a large piece of property, heavily wooded. There are no neighbors within a reasonable distance to be concerned with in this application. No neighbors have come to us to speak either for or against the application. And if you could give us a final survey as to the placement of the generator and the pad, she grant, we'll give you six months to start and one year to finish.
Thank you, sir.
Aye, second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Thank you, have your variance.
Thank you very much.
231 Sawmill River LLC.
So when did you stop speaking to your architect?
I was managing my fantasy football team. I didn't know how appropriate that would be if I was sitting next to him. Just being honest with you.
Michael Picarella and the architects, representing Dr. Jeremy Tubbs. Dr. Tubbs owns Millwood Adam Hospital, you're familiar with that, on Sawmill River Road, next door to the building that houses Rocky's Deli. So he came to us to do an expansion of the building, primarily to give himself some more room to work within his vet office. Obviously, the concern here is that we are short three parking spaces. So there's never been a parking issue before. He's not looking to expand his business, so he has four employees today and a lot of four employees when this is completed. So again, there's never been an issue with parking.
Do you have the permitted, the required number of spaces now?
No, because of the dumpsters located in the front. And quite honestly, the front lot has never been striped. If you go out there now, it's not even striped. So, no, we figure out where, you know, we're definitely. even striped. So, um, no, we figure out we're, you know, we're definitely in a, in a deficit in the front. Um, and there's no other way to make the parking work. We actually even looked at doing, uh, reconfiguring the parking lot to get, gain more spaces, but it's not wide enough to do, uh, you know, a twenty-four foot wide, uh, double aisle. So, um, so the truth, the short answer is no. Uh, currently, it does not comply. Um, and again, because we're not, there's, there's no other way, there's no place to locate parking on site, and quite honestly, uh, there's, there isn't, uh, a need for more parking. Um, they don't use the parking that, you know, it's correct me to say, they, they don't even use all the parking that they have now. I, every time I visited, uh, the, the office, there's never been an issue with me finding parking. So...
So you, you currently have seven spaces.
Uh, I think there's, currently, there's, uh, six plus the, yeah, six plus the handicap. The way, the way, uh, Newcastle's zoning, uh, parking rules, the handicap space for some, you know, again, some strange reason, doesn't count towards the number. So it's the handicap is, is a requirement, but it is, is, that is outside the, the, the number of spaces required. So it's that six plus, so we call that six plus one.
And the required number today is...
It'll be, it'll be required to be have nine. Uh, uh, we're required to have, with, with the expansion, we would be required to have twelve. But with the reconfigured, we, uh, we're gonna move the dumpster to the back, um, to the back of the building, so it'll actually share, um, with these. The, the carting service is gonna use the dumpster, uh, currently uses, uh, services the dumpster for Rocky's Deli, that, which is in the back. So that's actually, that works out best for even the, the carting company to have the dumpster in the back. Um, and then we're, we're gonna end up having nine spaces in the front plus, plus the handicapped. So we'll be at deficit of three. But again...
We'll all be in the front.
All be in the front. There's no, there's no other place to, to, to locate parking.
I'll go on the plane, in the back. It says asphalt parking area on your, on your site plan.
Uh, it's currently paved area. It's not a, it's not, it's not a, it's not a parking space. Um, actually, I...
'Cause I can't see how you could even get there. I'm looking at this thing. How you, how would you get a vehicle back there?
Um, I think in, in, in the past, they might have used it for, for employee parking.
Yeah.
Um, I, I proposed that early on, but I was told that, that that's not permissible in, in Newcastle. In other towns, I've gotten away with that, but apparently not in Newcastle. I can't use a stacked parking space as an employee space.
Okay.
Um, so there's no, there's no other place for parking. Um, behind the building, uh, is all steep slopes. Um, and I think, you know, the improvements to the building will be, uh, not only help out, um, uh, the, the practice, uh, to improve the practice, but it'll also, actually, we're gonna, um, aesthetically change the building to improve it.
What is the status of your application before the planning board?
Uh, we, uh, we have, uh, we're going back, uh, next Tuesday. Um, we had, uh, we had, we received comments in August. We responded to those comments, and it, it looks like...
Your application before them is for...
For the site plan change, site plan approval, correct. So we've already responded to the comments. From what I understand, they're preparing a resolution. So it looks like it, it should be a favorable result on, on Tuesday.
It's not conditioned on anything we do?
I, I'm sure, I'm sure it is, but, um, because of the time of the year and then with our, I asked them if I could come before you and ask for, for a variance, for the parking variance, in order to, um, sort of expedite the process, knowing that most likely I'm gonna need a, a zoning variance for parking anyway. So I asked them if I could do this, to, to, to come before you and, while that process is going on simultaneously. So they, they were okay with that.
Mr. Chairman, can I add one thing? This is an area variance, even though it's not your typical setback variance. Um, however, under seeker, it's not a listed action. However, we, we looked into it. Because it's under four thousand square feet, it is a type-two action. So no, uh, seeker review is necessary.
Okay, okay.
Uh, no one in the audience, let the record show, to speak to this application. Um, I move that we close the public hearing.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Would you like to make a motion?
I said, nobody gonna make a motion, huh?
I do it. I, I move that we approve the application of two thirty-one Sawmill River LLC, um, for an application to reduce the required number of parking spaces. Uh, you can actually with the expansion of a, um, an animal hospital, uh, from eleven spaces to nine spaces plus a handicap space for the following reasons.
Requiredly, it's twelve.
The requirement is, you're gonna have...
It's a, it was a deficit of three, so it's twelve to...
Oh, it's twelve. Twelve required spaces and the deficit, the variance will be to, for the deficit of three, so that there will be, um, nine spaces plus one handicap space provided, uh, for the following reasons. Uh, the application, applicant has demonstrated that, um, the proposed change is one that is, um, required for his, uh, continued use of the building and, and his property in the manner that is most suited to his expansion. Um, he's also demonstrated that, um, the, uh, the granting of the variance will not create an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties. No neighbors have appeared in or written in opposition. Uh, no other feasible method is available to the applicant, which is likely to achieve the benefit being sought. The requested variances, um, I would not consider them substantial, considering the, um, nature of the use and, uh, the low volume of, um, parking required by the applicant in the past. Uh, the proposed variance will not have an adverse effect on or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the property. And while the difficulty or hardship is self-created, uh, it is, uh, not one that would, um, outweigh the benefit being sought or the likelihood of, um, any other adverse condition, uh, with respect to the improvement. Uh, for those reasons, um, I move that we approve the application. Uh, six months to, how long do you need to complete everything?
Uh, assuming all goes well, next week with planning and then building after that, uh, we should hopefully have a, uh, we should be able to start within six months.
Six months to start and then a year to complete.
Correct, yeah.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Thank you. Happy variance.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, I move that the board approve or adopt the meeting minutes for the July twenty-fifth, two thousand and eighteen meeting. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Okay, we're off.